I'll give our friends downstairs maybe just 10 seconds to flip all the right switches and make sure all of the equipment's running and humming and warmed up and everything like that, and then I'll call the meeting officially to order. So it is 7:04, and we'll officially call the February 27, 2019 work session to order. We'll let the minutes reflect that all the board members are here with the exception of Andy Moore, who is en route, and he'll catch up with us. We have a number of members of staff, and we have some distinguished audience members. We do have the minutes of February 13 before us, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I moved and seconded any discussion on those minutes. Okay, seeing no discussion, those in favor, aye. Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as written. Thank you, Lisa, for capturing all of that for us. The monthly reports are all in, so those are all logged in for the month. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no guests. We'll move right into our action items, and our first action item is Capstone subdivision special improvement district. There was a public hearing, I believe it was the 6th of February, and Mr. Valentine is handing out some materials here. All right, so Mr. Valentine, when you're ready...
Thank you.
Please lead us through the discussion.
Yeah, so as the board recalls, February 6th, had a public hearing for the Capstone development for creation of a special improvement district, and all's the conversation about a sign that they want to put on the property. So first matter is creation of the district. As part of that is holding the hearing, had the hearing. We had a few questions that were drainage-related in the area, but I don't remember anything from the public that was a concern about the formation of the district. And basically, the formation of the district is that the benefit of the pond, including the sign if it's approved by the board, would come at the cost of the future 17 residents that live in that neighborhood. So creates the district, which then creates that taxing line, so those residents that are benefiting from the drainage of the pond pay for the weekly, bi-weekly mowing of it, any maintenance required of the trees, and then any future maintenance of the sign with that. The overall drainage functionality is covered under the drainage district, which everyone pays, since in general, this is just more of the aesthetics and the general maintenance of that item. So at that time, I asked the developer to submit what he was looking for for the sign. That's the top sheet, is basically a stone brick look to that, kind of the post area. He's got a wrought iron gate, which was on the back of the existing house that was there. He salvaged that, sandblasted it, brought back the wrought iron to that, and then wants to put the Capstone sign on the front of that. It's an acrylic-type material, so it's not wood, and he would etch it in and deal with that. So I then asked him for some pictures of where he was looking to put the sign, just so the board would understand the location of that, we could look at, you know, was any site distance issues, you know, pulling out of Creek Street or pulling in, and then its proximity to where his pond is. So it's the next three. He provided a few that were in the general area, because there's also a question of setback that we'll talk about in a second, and then I also asked him for what the cost of the sign was for construction, so we could approximate if there was future betterments or, you know, maintenance needed on the sign, understand what the cost of that is. Any questions thus far? And I'll talk about the setback.
Setback is probably the big item.
Yep. So we had initial discussions about the setback, and our code doesn't specifically talk about subdivision signs, but it talks about signs for businesses.
Right.
So the best reference we have is 250-10.12, which references a 20-foot setback for signs for a business, not a subdivision. So being off of Creek Street, he's got more than 20 feet setback to the sign, but trying to fit it in the subdivision, have it, one, visible, and, two, not in the pond, he's looking at something less than that, and the right-of-way's back, so I think he's at about 10 feet instead of 20 feet. So that's why he provided some other sketches of other locations he thought were comparable to that. We had the discussion, we had the previous discussion with the supervisor and the town attorney, as whether the setback issue needed to go to the zoning board, or was it under purview of the town board, and being that this is town-owned land, I believe we redetermined that it would be under the town board's purview if we were accepting of the sign. Obviously, okay with the creation of the district, the board would have the purview to say yes, that setback seems appropriate and is okay. So we've got kind of a couple of items. First, I guess, is the board's support of the creation of the special improvement district. We've got the meets and bounds. We had the petition and followed all the processes, had the public hearing, so it's a matter of, if the board's okay with it, passing a resolution to create the district itself, get that to the assessor, and then she can create the line item, and then, depending upon what's approved for that, I would sit down with the DPW director, Eric, look at what the costs are, what we should do with other neighborhoods of how if we do a bi-weekly mow, what's the cost of that, and then, you know, include a small amount that would go into every year for, you know, future maintenance of the sign.
Okay. And Mark, I did not see here, but could you remind us square footage of the sign? You guys figured it out consistent with how we figure signs?
I know he submitted it to Andy, and I think Andy was okay with it. I don't have, he had a dimensional...
Okay.
...lineup before, and I checked with Andy on the actual sign.
And it was within the code?
He was happy with what it was, and now I'll confirm that square footage of what that actual physical sign part of it is.
Okay. All right. So the two items that, if the square footage is consistent with code, the two items that we have to discuss and rule on is the setback component, which is a couple of feet less, two feet, six inches, round numbers, less than what we would have by any normal business, if you will. And again, that's the best criteria that we had to use against, and then certainly approval of the overall district itself.
I don't have any concerns with the district. I'm looking here, it looks as if, I guess, you know, my question when it relates to these is always, is the sign in a place where it's not going to impede any rights of way or sightline distances, turning left, right, from any direction? So I mean, that's my one question really about the placement of the sign, based on what we know of the size of the sign.
Yeah, and we looked at it, and we talked about it at PRC. You know, the proximity, it's well back of Creek Street, so it's not impacted Creek Street, and then obviously want to make sure, and you can see it's back of a line of the pine trees, you know, that were planted, it's outside the right-of-way, so it's not in the right-of-way. It's back of the right-of-way, our requirement is 20 feet back in the right-of-way, so it's not in any utility locations, but that's, I asked him to kind of hold up a, oh, he chose to hold up a...
Saw that.
A plank of wood, but I said, if you can at least kind of stake something out, just so we can kind of see the proximity of where he wants to put it. It's back of the road, and I believe DPW is okay with, you know, future snow piling and making sure it was outside of that area, so if we've got a...
Location was my original concern. Between the picture and Joe, and I actually went out to take a look at it, don't feel that it would be an issue.
By way of any site distance.
Correct.
And also, snow, if you've got to shove something back, you've got room to push the chute off the road and then...
All right. And nothing came up, I was not at the public hearing, I was watching a public hearing, and there was nothing that came up by way of any concerns from any neighbors as it related to the district. I know there was a question about grading of some lots and the, some drainage-related items and some things like that, but from an overall district standpoint, there was really no issues that came up or surfaced as part of that public hearing, so.
Mark, when a sign is placed such as this, you mentioned about snow removal. Is there some release of liability that's put in place somehow in the event that the snow or plow, you know, dumps snow onto this, like a mailbox, where we have to go in and fix the sign, given where they've chosen to place it?
I mean, it's outside the normal right-of-way, so there shouldn't be any impact or loss on it. You know, it's not a normal spot, we would deposit snow with it, and if somebody drove off the road and hit it, you know, we would be collecting funds for repairs for it from the neighborhood, but obviously, we pursue the insurance of whatever car slid off the road, you know, that hit it, and they would obviously be responsible for it, and it would be on town property, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So, sounds like board comfortable with what's being proposed, both the sign and the district itself?
Yeah, I can make a motion on both those items. I move that we go ahead and approve and have a resolution submitted for the special district as requested.
I'll second that, those.
And additionally, I'll move, oh, do you want to move?
Yep.
Also move...
We'll do them both.
Yeah, also move that we approve the sign as well as the requested setback. So the size of the sign, the content, and the location.
Okay.
I'll second that as well.
All right. So we've got moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Again, this is for establishing the park district, the sign, and the pond area will then be maintained through funds collected of the owners of that area. Any additional comments, or staff, anything that we have not discussed that you believe should be added to the record, that either wasn't heard at the public hearing or had not been discussed this evening? Okay, great. The move, the seconded, those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries for that.
So, just as a follow-up, then, is that, would we want to look at code as far as these kinds of signs, or is it because of the unique nature of each property is different that we don't have any guidelines in our, regarding setbacks?
Yeah, I know Jim Costello is currently looking at some revisions to the code. We've kind of been compiling stuff along the way, so I kind of made a little particular note for myself, is this something we didn't come back to and take a look at it? You know, obviously, each location's a little bit different, depending on the configuration of the road and where it is.
And I can see the reason that maybe it's not included because of that, and having, you know, this board is...
Different locations, different...
There's discretion, so I was just curious if that's an oversight or maybe intentional.
Something we would look at, and then obviously, he's got more background in history, and so, no, we did this, and it's worked for 40 years, and that's the way it should be, or, no, we've kind of just adapted from that, and we've had different instances, but, you know, for signage for a business, you know, normally, you're just kind of going by on Creek Street, and it's 20 feet off the right-of-way, just so it's not up by the road.
Right.
And he's complying with that. This is, obviously, as you pull into the subdivision, you know, it's a little bit closer to the side street, which obviously isn't as big of a concern to be off the main highway, but that's something I made a little note of to kind of follow up with him and see if, you know, that's something we need to look at as revision, or it's worked.
Yeah, so if you think about it, you know, not every subdivision, you know, has one of these signs. And so there's photographs in here of a couple, Beacon Hills and Water Song, I think are the ones that they showed. I think the last one that this board discussed was the Ashland Rise, if I'm not mistaken, for that one. And that's what really prompted us to have the conversation about pulling the sign into the special district, because the sign goes, and it looks great for that first five, six, seven, eight years, whatever. Developer builds out, they're gone, either retired, bankrupt, moved on to another community, whatever the case is, and then folks are looking to have the town do the sign. And so this way with the district, and I think that's why we moved in that direction, instead of coming out of town and having everybody in the town pay for it, those that are there. And I know that this particular builder, Mastick Builders, when he built Sparrow Point, there was a temporary sign that was there while they were selling lots. I think once the last lot was sold, then the sign was pulled, and I believe the only sign that's there is the street sign, Sparrow Point and Bear Road, I think is the only one that's there. So again, you know, some have, some don't, and the idea of having it in the special district covered by those residents, I think is the better way to go. But yeah, I think that's a great point, though, Mark, to, you know, maybe just take a look at that as part of our revisions that will probably come to this board. I think when I last spoke with Dick and Cos, probably the April-ish timeframe, I think, is what they're looking at.
And since you mentioned it, the monument signs are one thing, it's the signs when the properties are being developed that are usually bigger and more of an eyesore, so...
Like Homer Anan?
Yeah, I mean, those signs, like the one that is currently at the Atlantic and Five Mile, I mean, those signs are larger than almost any monument sign you'd see, so if there's a way to kind of look at those signs as far as when these developers come in and are, you know, it's one thing to be building the lots, the other thing to have a gigantic billboard out at the corner that's blocking, or just...
Because it is a business, and they should probably be in some way conforming to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
What other businesses have to conform to?
I know Andy looks at them, but, you know, I know Andy does review them, and they have to meet whatever the current standard is, but maybe that current standard...
Maybe the current standard is...
Maybe the current standard needs to be looked at. We do look at setbacks, and, you know, it is reviewed, but, you know, maybe that needs to be reviewed as part of that.
All right. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item B under action items. John Deere 210 excavator, Mr. Tate.
Thank you. So we do have a, we currently have a 210 excavator, we use it for a lot of the drainage projects. We actually bought it off a rental lease a number of years ago. It's been doing good, you know, getting us through all of our projects. It is getting up there in agent hours. There is significant value to it right now, if it were to go to an auction, and we were actually approached by one of the dealers with a good deal to purchase a new one. Prior, you know, given that ours had just, the warranty on it has just expired, the repairs, if we needed to go down that road, are certainly significant. I'd like to try to avoid that and look to purchase a new one with a full warranty to cover us for the next seven years or $3,500.
Can the whole of it go to auction, or is it a trade-in type thing?
We would actually get more value to be able to sell it, to send it to the auction. Private companies, you know, especially this time of year, knowing that they've got spring projects coming up, will buy it for more than what a trade-in value would go for.
We tend to look both ways, trade-in value versus going to auction with Teetsworth, and we have consistently found that as we look to do that for most of our equipment, the auction brings in a higher residual back to the town overall. So to give you an idea...
Sometimes even more than retail value.
Yeah. Eric had spent some time with the folks to get an idea from Teetsworth, so based on the age, the hours, and, you know, the use that we've had so far, you know, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $120,000 to $130,000 that would bring overall. Eric's got the numbers for the newer one and can give us what that is, so that the delta between what the auction would bring in versus the new. And then Eric and Mark have discussed, similar to when we acquired the original 210, that it was, because it is used for so many of the drainage projects, that it was funded out of that, and then anything that might be brought in from the auction would then be refunded back to the drainage fund.
We've got a number of projects lined up, you know, with permits already issued from DEC that we'd like to be able to work on, and we'd like to make sure that we have a machine that isn't going to have any downtime.
Is this excavator out of the commission ditch cleaning?
Yes.
Yep.
It just seems like it was just yesterday.
Yeah, right. And that's been through, you know, the complete cleaning of the commission ditch, but then some subsequent follow-up cleaning of the commission ditch. Mark, or Mark, Eric, if you wouldn't mind to give the board a rundown on the numbers of the new piece of equipment, so that the board understands what we're looking at, new piece of equipment versus then the residual auction amount, and then what that delta is that we would be looking to take from the drainage fund.
The new excavator with the $3,500 hour, 84-month full warranty on anything and everything comes out, comes to a total of $207,300. You know, expecting somewhere in the range of 120 to 130, that's putting us somewhere around a $75,000 difference, plus or minus.
Wow, that's crazy. That, you can actually... It's like 120 to 130, and how old's the current machine?
Our current machine, it's a 2012. We ended up actually purchasing it in 2013. Yeah, I believe sometime in 2013 after we leased it for a little while, and actually, the machine back then had cost more than, we spent more on this machine with the selling price than what we're able to buy this one for now.
Piece of it, a piece of it is, you know, what's on, you know, the state bid or the bid, or the county bid price as well. So that's the proposal to the board, for us to go to auction this spring, and then to acquire the new John Deere, and under the contract, kind of contract, and then refund or whatever money's brought in from auction, to push that back to the drainage fund.
I, yeah, I think that's all reasonable.
DPW is looking for approval of that, and then there'd be a resolution down the road when it's acquired and the money's moved around.
Yeah, we could, so we can do two things, you know, because the auction, you know, tends to be in the March timeframe, we could process a resolution in early March, send it to auction, and then look to acquire the piece of equipment, the latter part of March.
Is that what you want to do?
I believe the spring auction, I think, is in May.
Is it May? I'm sorry.
So we'll be doing that.
So would we be getting the, doing the auction first regardless of when it is? What comes first then? Purchasing?
I'd be inclined to purchase it first, so that we can get on some of our drainage projects before permits expire.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's moved by Paula, seconded by Linda. Further discussion on that item?
No.
Staff, any additional, and specifically, Mark and Eric, any additional thoughts, comments that you'd like to be part of the record that we have not discussed on this matter? Okay. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. We'll move on to Ashland MC. This is a special permit at 2567 Brauncroft Boulevard, and so it has Jim Costello's name associated with that, so I will take an opportunity. Mary and Bob, welcome to the table. I'll take just a moment to play the Jim Costello role this evening. So two weeks ago at work session, Mary and Bob were here. At that time, they provided, you know, some information for us that they handed out on this, and then additionally, a day or two later, Mary provided the information that we requested as it related to the lease information, and she submitted a number of different documents for that, which I think was very helpful and certainly very detailed, so thank you for that and sharing that with the board overall. And I think one of the discussion points at our meeting on the 13th, I believe it was, that date, that we said that, you know, we're at a point, I think with all of the information that has been submitted and the discussions that we have had, that we're at a point that to bring this to some logical closure overall. So I think the discussion tonight, so I'll lay out where I think the discussion points are, is that I think this board agreed consistent with the, I want to say it was August of 1964, that that building had three separate and distinct units, and that was the case then, and I think we were, we said that we were comfortable, you know, with that and upholding that. And then I think the discussion tonight is within those units, the number of, within those three units, the number of bedrooms for that project, and I think, again, if I recall, and Mary, Bob, if I misspeak, I think within that one unit, there were six units, one with five and one with one, if I recall the numbers correctly. Is that, did I?
When we converted the drawings over from the 12 studios...
Yes.
Then because of the layout of the house, it ended up having six bedrooms for one of the units, five for the other, and one for the third.
Right.
And then I came back and said, I really prefer to have single individual studio apartments, it's more manageable.
Right. So where we are tonight is that to have that discussion with the board is, you know, what is that right, what is that right number? Is it, you know, the 12 that you have indicated, or is it, you know, something less than that? So I think that's where the board, you know, needs to pick up and discuss where we are, kind of what the next steps are. So I believe I've hit all of the items that were kind of outstanding for this at this time, and I think the issue around the garages, that has been vetted out, if I'm not mistaken.
We did get approval for 12 garages.
We did get approval for 12 garages. However, I think there was some discussion, did you need those, that full number of garages?
If we don't have 12 units, we don't have 12 garages.
Then you'll make adjustments accordingly.
Right.
So, okay. So I think that's where we are. Hopefully, I didn't misrepresent anything, and I did Mr. Costello proud for summarizing where we were with this application.
If you had less than 12...
What could my number be?
No, no, I mean, if you had eight, what would you do with the other four that you were thinking of having for studios?
I would have, I would end up having bigger units again.
Bigger units, yeah.
I believe, I, I don't know if any of you have seen, we've been working on the outside of the house, and the roof, and the chimney, and the basement.
Every time they're back.
Yeah, so the basement's completely waterproofed and done, and all the lights are done, and I talked with the man who's been doing that, and we did talk about, initially, because of the way the layout was and the units, there wasn't complete access through the house from the back and the front, and some of the things that we've talked about made me think it would be nice to have a community area in the back that everyone could access, either from their exterior entrances or through the house, and we brought it down to 11 units because we lost a unit for flow. We took, we took that out, we made the bedroom in the back unit, the white house, bigger, and we used that entrance off the porch to get through the house. So Jeremy and I discussed it, and we thought 11 units worked well. So Jeremy and I discussed it, and we thought 11 units worked well. If I brought it down to 10, it would make a two-bedroom for one of the units. Because the space is there.
Yep.
So I either have 10 with a two-bedroom.
Right.
And then all the rest, one-bedrooms or studios, or I have 11 studios.
Mary, could, and so I apologize, could you, could you say a little bit more about that common area, if you would, please?
Yes, can I show you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and now, I mean, this is, I'm no architect, so I apologize. But.
More just conceptually, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, what we did is we, did I draw that here? I drew it on here. Basically, what would happen would be, I did it with pencil. So initially, what, the way this is set up is.
Let me get some of this stuff out here, so the lace flat. Yep, absolutely.
So this porch has an entrance on both doors. And when we had the 12 units, this, this entrance came to this unit. So, and then this unit entered, here's the deck, it enters here. So what we talked about is making this bedroom bigger, bringing it back to this wall. So now this white house has a bigger, pardon me, a bigger bedroom. And then you come in here, you go through here, so we get rid of this bathroom here. We get rid of this half-bath, which was shared because the kitchen and living room here. And it allows people who live with either this entrance or this entrance, so it would be this unit one and six upstairs, to have access from either side of the house. What's nice about that, then, is then we put a courtyard here with a grill and some seating, and anybody can commingle there if they want to. And here are three garages, so the people who live with an entrance here can come in, and then other people, a person who lives here can come in, and then the person that comes from this unit can come in there. That's their three garages.
So what's the security? Do they all have the same card or something to get into the main area?
Well, the main door would have a key code on it, and everyone who lives in the building would know it. But then people who have their own units would have a different code.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We like to use those kinds of locks.
Yeah.
Because then people aren't losing keys, and they're not handing keys out, and it's easier for us to change the code. Sometimes, you know, a tenant has a friend that they invite over, they get the code to, and then they call Bob and I, you know, what do we do with the code? You know, then we have to get Don to go over and change the code because they don't want their friend coming anymore. So it makes it easier if you've got, if you've got a lock, then now you have to change the lock, and it's a lot more costly.
Right. Versus just changing the, changing the code.
The code, right, right.
And so is the next page, the second?
This is just the second floor, which wouldn't change it off because there's only one way to get up there.
Right.
So, but, but, but that would eliminate this, this unit. So if, if I was only able to do 10, I mean, this was going to be two, two bedrooms here, so I decided to just do one and then make this living room, kitchen, this whole, would be one unit. So if I could only do 10, and this bedroom would go with this unit, and then that would make this a very large apartment.
Right. So you'd have, you'd have one?
A bedroom here, a bedroom here, and a shared living room here.
Like a penthouse, the special one that's in.
Right. But, you know, then, then you have another, the problem with renting to two friends is one loses their job, or they get into a relationship, and now who's paying the higher rent when only one person lives there? And, I mean.
Other than, there might be some attraction to have, you know, one person wanting a two-bedroom.
Yes, a salesperson, I mean, they usually like to bring their furniture though.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
They, I mean, I know when I moved to Rochester, I brought my own furniture. I had a two-bedroom because I had a home office.
Home, exactly, the office.
Yeah, right. And it, and I like to do furnished units because then there's less damage. Nobody's bringing anything in and out, there's no damage to the walls. I mean, it really works for us.
Minimize, certainly minimize.
It's a different kind of tenant. They're not necessarily, and we've had a lot of tenants in Vermont stay with us a long time because of their circumstances, and they like, they love their units. But I don't know if we would have that. I don't know if we'd get that kind of older retired type individual here in a two-bedroom.
And so what kind of monthly rental rates are you looking at?
Well, I know in Vermont, we get 860. And Vermont is very comparable to, I think it's comparable to here. I don't, I don't know exactly because the only house we have here is for student housing, so their rents are a little bit less. And they share, these boys share a house. So we get 860 for a studio and includes utilities and it's furnished. And we were thinking it would be around the same. And that's a very fair price for someone. It's very affordable for someone who has about a $40,000 income. So.
How many units? When you say unit, you're talking about beds, correct?
Studio. Yeah, I'm talking about individual human beings living in a, in a space. So.
Individual tenant.
Separate, not, not couples. We don't, we don't rent to couples.
No, you, but I've heard two bedrooms, one bedroom, two bedroom.
Well, we would have to, if we had to make it 10 units, we'd have a two-bedroom, and then I would have to rent to two people.
But you're not referring to that as two units? You're referring to that as still one unit?
If I go down to 10 units, I would have a one-two bedroom.
Yeah, basically the number of leases you're talking.
Right.
One, two people.
Well, that's why I'm trying to just in my head figure out the unit is.
Everybody else is a single.
Mary, I, in this, I thought the original plan that you proposed to the town was for rentals for professors or executives that were coming in on assignment for a year or so, that just, you know, needed a place to stay. Maybe they fly home once a month or something like that to their families. That's how I thought this was coming to us. And now you just say for people making $40,000 a year, which is fine.
Right.
But to me, the story's changed completely.
Well, I think that my opportunity to rent to people who are here short-term is higher in Rochester than it is in Springfield, Vermont. I mean, I personally know that a doctor I go to has a residence, her permanent home is in Florida, and she comes up here for two weeks a month. And she rents a situation very similar to this, which influenced my belief system that that was viable. Then I heard of other places like Harris and Corning and other businesses, Xerox locally, that have people that are renting that way. Then I went online and saw that that's true. So my thought process is that I wouldn't necessarily have, like in Vermont, I have a teacher, I have a phlebotomist, you know, I have, it's like a chemist or some physicist, something like that, works at a local lab. I wouldn't necessarily have those tenants here, but those tenants have an income around $40,000. So I don't know who my tenants are going to be. I know the tenants that responded to the ad I ran were people that were looking for internship, U of R, people that are relocating, a couple that wanted a place for the summer. And then I took the ad down. I just wanted to get an idea of what I'm going to get, but.
So I think, I think what I, I think what I heard, Mary, so I, I mean, to maybe address your point, and again, just make sure that I state this correctly. But I think what I heard is that when you asked the question, what are you looking at for the monthly rent or lease? And, you know, Mary said around that 860, you know, which fits within somebody that you might have an income of 40, a minimum, you know, minimum of 40,000. That doesn't mean that somebody, you know, wouldn't be, wouldn't be higher.
Right.
But it would fit, it would fit within their budget. Somebody with a $40,000 income, it would fit within their budget, that 860-ish, is what I think I heard.
Right, right. I think you missed the last meaning when I talked about, you know, and I have been talking about, like, who's my potential tenant? It's someone who's finished college and has their first job, they're from a different city and they're relocating here, and they're just getting their feet wet, they don't know if they're going to stay, they don't know how it's going to work out. Or it's someone who is here on contract. I just don't know. But I know that there's a lot of contract opportunity for tenants. And I think those people aren't around a lot. You know, they're, I mean, the doctor I know, she's here just two, two weeks a month.
So what would be the lease term then?
Could you, you can mind the water, please. What would be the lease? Well, it's, it's the term, it's the term of their, how long they're going to be here, and the shorter it is, the more they pay.
Right.
So.
So what makes it different than an Airbnb?
Well.
If I want to come for two weeks, I can order.
No, no, I don't want to do that. No. No, um, no, that's just too much work. I mean, I, that's not what, that's not what I'm looking for.
You'd probably be in your, in your best interest profession or business-wise to have a year lease.
Yes.
And then they're locked in.
Bob and I like to travel. I mean, we want to have our own personal life. We bought the building because we live next door and we wanted to protect our interest. But I don't want to be a babysitter, and I don't want to be a housekeeper.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I, I, I'm not a hotel. I don't, that's not my, that's not what I want to do. So.
So now your proposal is for 11 units with this new entrance?
Yeah, because we're taking the, I, I mean, I would like to put 11 units in.
Mm-hmm.
I would prefer not to have a two-bedroom unit.
Right. Makes sense. I understand.
Yeah, I mean, you've given us a lot of information, I must say, in the last couple times. You know, I certainly, my comfort level has raised, been raised quite a bit with respect to the project. And I think my, my concerns really are just in how, how this is rolled out in terms of an approval and conditions that, that protect you as well as neighbors, the town, you know, making it so that everyone understands what, you know, what's expected of the use. Because certainly with any use, the use can be taken away, and no one wants to see that happen. So we want to make sure that we, if approved, we all understand what the conditions are and are all on the same page, so there's no misunderstanding when there potentially is a problem and, and the town has to, you know, come back to it and revisit it.
Right, like, no boarding house. Everybody has their own space. I prefer they don't have to share space.
I think one of the last times or last couple of times, we have not chatted about the fencing. It's been a while since we talked a little bit about the fencing, so.
I was told I can't hit the fencing.
So you were told, you're.
By the historical board.
By the historic preservation.
Because I can only have stockade fencing if I want to put fencing up.
Way around the house or on the perimeter of the property?
Around the perimeter of the property. I don't feel that the stone fence that I have at my house would have been fenced that would have been in existence during the period.
Period, the period.
So therefore, if I want to put a fence up, I have to put a stockade fence up. And Bob and I like to do things forever. Like, the fence around our house is a 25-year warranty. It'll probably last 40 or 50 years. I, I, I only want to put a fence up once.
Right.
So therefore, I canceled the order because they said I had to put a stockade fence up.
Okay, so, so the historic preservation board has said it is a stockade fence or nothing at all?
So we, we do have 36 arborvitae's that are owed to us that we could put along the back of the property.
Historic board was okay with that?
That would be okay. Arborvitae's were around.
Makes sense.
Actually, that would, that probably would be really nice.
It would be less costly for us since we already are owed to, owed them. And when they do the excavation, they could just dig the holes and put them in.
And so you would look across, across the back here, my bearings, you're on this side?
Yeah, yeah.
You're on this, you're on this side, and so you'd be looking obviously along the back here, you've already got something around your property. And then would you look to wrap around at all on this side or?
No, I like the stockade fence that they have there. I think, and I don't own it, so I don't get to maintain it.
I was just going to say, that's right, that there is a fence there today.
Yeah, yeah. And that's nice.
Which is theirs.
Yes, yes, and.
But you're opposed to a stockade fence because again?
Well, I, I, because they don't last.
Maintenance.
It's maintenance. I mean.
And sometimes, actually, the, the combination of a fence and then.
Arborvitae's is attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't look so, I don't know, you know, like.
Institutional.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, arborvitae's will be very nice. They'll have a lifespan too, but it will be longer than a stockade fence.
Sure, absolutely.
So.
They would be more close, closely resemble the length of time that, that you have with your, your fence here.
Right.
Minimum, minimum of 25 or, or longer.
Yeah, right. And, I mean, I have the picture that I presented to you in my office while, that I look at all the time. I mean, it's such a lovely piece of real estate and, you know, with the, even with the garages, it will be so, just really very classy.
Tony, as far as the, the process of approval, are we doing, are we looking at a conditional use type arrangement? I mean, Paula mentioned something earlier, that if for some reason, and not saying this is going to happen, things just aren't working out, it's, it's, it's a problem, do we have the ability to go to the owner, whether it's current owner or new owner and say?
We certainly could condition.
Right.
That could be, could be a condition that, you know, in, as part of conditions of approval, we could add, you know, if in fact, you know, things were to change, or if there was something that, that happened that the board could go back and revisit, you know, the, the approval that, that we issued.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that would be something, you know, certain.
We've done that bef, it's almost like akin to like when we have a business where there's noise.
Right.
We can, you know, go back and if there's complaints about.
A music.
A music or something like that. But I always stress that they need to be, you know, founded complaints, you don't just go in.
Paul, and. Or, I would also say if the, you know, any use that changes, right, would have to fall under, you know, like if, if.
Yeah, like if I'm going to make a drug rehab building.
Correct.
Any change in.
Or you decide to sell it, which that would be within your right. And a new owner decides, I'm going to make this an Airbnb, or I'm going to make this monthly, rent by the month.
Oh, like a vacation home.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of a sudden, now, you know, it's just maybe becoming a potential issue. Put some assurances in there that uses are going to be proper uses and within the town's parameters of what we want to see in the town of Penfield versus something that, you know, we, we can't control, and now it's a problem because the new owner is renting it by the week or, you know, or.
And this is a historic property.
It's becoming a law enforcement problem, location or something.
This is, this is a historic site, you know, so there, there are some, you know, criteria under the historic section of the code is, is well. And, you know, hence why, you know, this has gone through, you know, several reviews with the historic preservation board overall. Town board still has final, final determination, final, final say, but the historic preservation board has been involved throughout the process, up to and including the stockade fence.
I think any, any approval, you know, I would want to, again, so that everyone's on the same page, have it be so that, you know, it's, it's a document that, that protects neighbors and their concerns, you know, future owners, the town throughout, of course, and, and you as well, so that you know what to expect. And there's no, you know, there's no gray areas to what the conditions are. There's no vagueness.
So what I'm asking for is to be able to put one-bedroom or studio apartments in the building. And to, I would like to have them to be furnished because that protects the building and it doesn't, people are not bringing things in, they're not hanging things on the wall, the window treatments are already there. I mean, literally, it protects the building.
It's a turnkey.
It's a turnkey. And, I mean, no smoking, you know, things like that, which I, you may not care about, but it makes it, Bob and I have had two buildings burned down because of cigarettes. We really care about that.
Are you allowed, legally allowed to do that? Are you?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, I'm just questioning.
We do not, they can't even get. We do not, they can't even get candles.
Is that legal or not?
Yeah.
Not legal to allow smokers or no smokers?
No candles, no smoking.
You can discriminate against smokers.
Can you?
They're not a protected class.
It's not a protected class.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
Discriminating.
And then, and then I'm guessing, you know, certainly folks, you know, if you take a look at the leases that were put together, you know, someone doesn't, you know, like the criteria or the conditions, they certainly...
You'd be able to smell it pretty quick.
They can, they can certainly, you know, say, okay, this may not be a place for me, and then, obviously, I would get, you know, if I recall correctly, so it's been a few weeks since I looked at that material, but, you know, someone violates, you know, you've got, you've got a provision to say, hey, you know, sorry, sorry Charlie, you signed on the dot of the line, so to speak, and, you know, you know, smoking or candles or whatever else, from a condition standpoint.
I mean, we, we pretty thoroughly vet people, we do a really good research on them, we, we ask the people, the references, if they've seen them smoke, we ask the people if they smoke, we, we don't even allow vaping, I mean, we just don't, I just don't want that, you know, vaping.
You don't allow vaping?
I just don't want that in the building.
I thought you said baking, and I'm thinking, nice, nice.
No, it's not.
Kind of sauce spot in my heart.
But we, we're very strict on that, because, because if you vape, you smoked probably, and you may go back, and we just, we're just, we don't, we lost two buildings and we lost one tenant, we just don't want it, it was traumatic for us.
Or are you with pets?
Pets, I, I don't think pets would be allowed in this building, we do allow pets in some of our buildings, but I just don't see, it's too many people, it's very unfair, there could be allergies, I, I, it's not the kind of tenant I'm looking for, I'm looking for a tenant that has a very active lifestyle, that wants just a really great place to live, and then goes somewhere, and is doing things, and has a social life, or is very quiet and wants a quiet life, but we're not looking for the first stage of the family creation, which includes a pet.
To those, yeah.
Yeah, as all of our children are entering, we realize that.
So, this, nobody may have the answer to this question, but originally, when the, back in the early 60s, when it was three units, what was, what was, what were the three units? Does anybody know? I mean, Mary's saying that right now, if, if we, if this board decided it's three units, and that's what we're authorizing, it would be a six-bedroom, a five-bedroom, and a one-bedroom, so what was it back in the 60s?
It was very, very weirdly chapped up, with like bathrooms in weird places, and lots of hallways and closets, and when we opened it up and connected it, we got a lot more height, and, you know, the rooms opened up, but it was pretty weird.
And for a time, there was just, it was single-family, and then there was like a, a tenant, like, in the back or something.
Yeah.
I was little, I used to go to some...
It was so creepy back there, and there was this room...
There was this tenant.
Yeah, there was this room that was like, we think it might have been like a refrigerator room on the second floor, that had like double walls and stuff, but it was like a room in a room, and it was...
Like a Stephen King movie.
Yes, well, but I, and, and there supposedly was a death in this building, and somebody at the historical society started to tell me about that, and then they took it back, so I have to get the details on it.
How about that?
Clearly, he's on it.
The man who did the shutters says he saw, has seen a ghost in here, so...
That's a good sales pitch.
Well, it just brings a different clientele.
That you can ever need you for.
Brings a different clientele, so, you know, Ghostbusters, so...
Well, we've cleaned it up so much, I mean, everything's so bright and clean down in the basement now, and the floors, we poured concrete in the floor, and we just made it like clean, so it's...
They needed that, yeah.
It's, oh, yeah, oh, it was so, it was, it was early, it was, it was unfinished basement.
Right.
Yeah, my, my concern is not really with the number of units, it's, it's, again, we're just making sure that the conditions are in place, and that it's, it's not gonna be bothersome to neighbors who may have, you know, come, come before, and that they, that they're reassured, you know, that, that it's gonna be a quiet place.
It will be quiet, yeah.
If I could, if I could just say something, Paul, you talk, you're mentioning neighbors, if you look at the proximity, we are the closest neighbors, we take, we take, take great pride in our property, and we've taken great pride in the building next door to us, and it'll continue in that vein.
Yeah.
We're not gonna let anything destroy our happy home.
And your financial investment.
Right.
Right. I, I'm more comfortable with, I mean, the unit's still concerning, I still think it's a little high, but I understand, but I, I would be much more comfortable if we included some of these conditions, not that, not that Mary, not that you're going to abuse this location, because I don't think that's what your intent is, but we don't know who future owners are, and we don't know what happens in the future, and to be able to prevent a property like this from declining in aesthetics or value or whatever, I think if we added some conditions in it that just protect everybody, I'd, I'd be more comfortable with that.
And protect the, the historical nature too, and I think that's one thing that why I'm comfortable with multiple units, is that I, I think, my recollection of the house and just how you present to us is that, it, it sounds ironic, but I think the more units is more preservation, because you're not knocking down walls necessarily, you're, you're, I think...
I'm keeping all the rooms.
Yeah, I, I, you're, you're doing less altering of the structure than if you were to have it be three units.
Right.
That, that's kind of what I've thought all along, is that, you know, what, what is going to be also preserving the original, you know, brick and mortar of, of this building.
What, what are you thinking, what are the kinds of safeguards that you're thinking of should be included?
Good question, um, you know, and, and I think Jim Costello could, could help in that, but just some, what you said before, some of the conditions that we've seen in other, um, potential uses, now those uses were like restaurant uses or whatever, but...
Yeah, but like noise not, noise not exceeding the boundary of...
The lighting, lighting, yes, that, that.
Well, and I think, I think there's some items, you know, within the leases...
Yeah.
That, you know, would be helpful as part of that, and I think that was one of the reasons the board wanted to, to see some of those, you know, how they were structured and things like that, so I think there, there is an opportunity for that, so, and I think Paula, someone hit the nail on the head in, in that, you know, so, the, the first and foremost, the broader town, the surrounding neighbors rented, one of the closest neighbors are the Wynn's themselves, but we have the neighbors to the rear, and then, and then to the west, or to the east, excuse me, and so, you know, keeping, you know, keeping the nature of the building, you know, from the historic value that, that it is, and, you know, so I, I might propose, I might propose that, you know, if the board is so inclined to approve the next steps, that we would ask Jim to draft a resolution for us to take a look at, taking into account the neighbors, taking into account noise, taking into account maybe some of those conditions that, that have been spelled out in the lease themselves.
And to have the Wynn's looked at as well, as, as far as, because another thought I had is, when, when it comes to conditions like that, also what we are doing too is making sure that any precedent we're setting, you know, in the town or in this area, is one that if duplicated elsewhere would still be okay.
Right, with another large building.
Including the house right next to this one.
Oh, yes.
Because we wanna, my, I submit that it's important that we make sure that in the whole neighborhood field, that, that the conditions maybe against you are strict, so, are strict enough that, so, someone who's coming in for, for instance, for that house would have to abide by the same type of conditions, because it'd be only fit, it won't be there. So, that, I'm also thinking, you know, and I don't mean that to, to box you in for somebody else's, but to also just keep that in mind, that, you know, and those are some of the types of dwellings we have concerns with, is to make sure that the use is structured.
Well, when you, when you approve an apartment building, because basically it's an apartment building, what, what, what restrictions do you have for apartment building approvals?
Well, I mean, it...
They would all be in a multi-use district, this is a multi-use district.
It depends, yeah, it depends, it's not, it depends on how it's zoned, it's depend, it depends on, you know, where it's at, that's why we have use, you know, use approvals is because they're tailored to particular use, so, so what, for instance, the, what was approved for Water's Edge on the bay...
Right.
Is not gonna be the same as this.
Right, well, there's a lot of, yeah, that's a very large cap plus, right, right, right.
Yeah, my, my, my concern is, is really two, one, what happens when you decide not to be the owner anymore, making sure that the town at the time, wherever the board is, has the ability to take a look at who the new owner is, and maybe hold a permit if cho, if, if it chooses to do so.
And it goes back to what I was saying.
Exactly what you said, and then the other thing is the slippery slope, I mean, I don't want two years from now, if the economy changes for whatever reason, you to start to decide you wanna do something different with how you run your leases, I, that, you can't start a slippery slope, we can all say that this is not gonna happen, but the number of times I can tell you, three years from now, something changes in this town, we're always, that's what we're looking at all the time, so, that, those are my two biggest concerns, is really the conditional of the use, the long-term use of this, I'm, I'm less concerned with the number of units, I'm not too keen on the size of the garage, and I'm also, I'm just really not in favor of the project without a fence. That was the biggest takeaway for me at the public hearing with the res, with the residents is, you know, there's certainly some concerns about what clientele, you know, at the time of the public hearing, there's certainly...
Well, that was rude, I am not gonna rent a pedophile's, and it is just downright rude.
Okay, and I understand that, however, however...
And they took the fence down that was between our property, I'm sorry, they took our fence, they took our fence down.
But, Mary, but what I'm saying is that, these are residents who have lived in their properties, and you're coming with a residentially zoned property and looking to alter the number of people on that property, I believe that there is some level of contract that the town has with the residents, when they purchase a piece of property, they can have a pretty good understanding that the use is going to be held to, so this would be a one or two or potentially three house, you know, three-unit house. That said, I empathize with the parents, and I empathize with the neighbors who don't wanna have 12 cars coming and going, with 12 different headlights, with 12 different garages, with guests of 12 different people, so I am not in favor of really the project moving forward without a fence to isolate the neighbors who, for whatever their concerns may be, have purchased their properties prior to this one being looked at as far as a different use.
I don't know, I think the lighting issue, you know, the arborvitae might be as good as the fence as far as the...
Well, fence, you know...
The fence isn't gonna...
They took the fence down.
I'm not looking at a fence for lighting.
The swing set within three feet of the property line.
But that was their big thing, it was noise and lighting, those are the two things those, that those neighbors were talking about.
Well, I, I think a fence is a defined barrier.
I know, but the car lights, they were talking about that, that was the garage, they were afraid that people coming and going, and going to their backyard and all that, you know, as long as you have something that kind of breaks it off, but...
Well, let's put it this way, if, if what you're asking me to do is to put up a stockade fence on the other side of the swing set that they put within three feet of the property line, and they took the stockade fence down that was there, they ripped it down, I can put one back up, if that's what's going to make this project work.
Well, I...
And we'll have to ask them to leave it alone.
I would say that if you put a fence up around the perimeter, it is your fence and not theirs, I would also say that that's what I'm asking you to do, not what the five of us are asking you to do, so, it's just, it's just something that, you know...
I'm good with arborvitae, yeah, that's a good, be more attractive too.
I'm not saying no arborvitae's.
Yeah, arborvitae and a stockade.
I'm just saying, I think a fence is, is warranted in this case, if you're looking to rent to 12 strangers who can come and go when they want, and have their leases end after three months or six months, or whatever it may be, I can empathize with the residents, absolutely, without question.
I think that that, that property laid vacant for five, six years, and that place, that property was in complete darkness.
Which property are you referring to?
The one that we're working on right now, there was no, there was no lighting there at all, I mean, it's, that was, that was an open playground for anyone who wanted to walk in and off that property, they could have crossed over property lines, and nobody have ever seen them.
Well, that's not, that's not what the concern is, but, but the, the, the reason, there was no swing set three feet from our property line until we petitioned, and there was a fence until we petitioned and the fence was removed, and I just wanna put that out there, and, and whatever it is, that if you want a fence and that's what will make the project work, we'll put it along the swing set area.
I don't think you're listening to what I'm saying.
I am, I am...
What I'm saying is it's not the swing set, it's not the one residence.
But there was no swing set there until we went for petition.
Okay, I'm talking about the entire perimeter, I'm talking about all of the residents, I'm not talking about one particular parcel.
Even you.
But, but we have a fence.
You go all the way around.
I was gonna say, there's a fence, there's a fence here today.
Right.
And then there's a fence that goes all the way to here, it's this fence that was removed, there was a fence there, it was removed, they took it down, and we will put one back up if, if that's what.
Who, the fence that came down, who owned that fence?
It's hard to say, because neither one of us lived there when the fence was put up.
So it was kind of on the, on the property line?
It was on the fence, on the property line.
Yeah, so it could have been...
It could have been either...
The former owner, or...
But they only took the park down that was by the swing set, they didn't take the park down that is by the shed, that's really close to the property line.
Why do you think that was?
I, 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 I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know why that would happen, I don't know why anyone would put a swing set so close, so far away from the kitchen, like, and, we have five kids, we never did that, our, we, we could see our kids, I don't know.
Okay, so, I don't know, I think that we need Jim Costello here, because he's good at getting a lot of those kind of conditions, pulling out what, you know, what can be utilized in our playbook, but also things that are in your, in your leases.
Well, I, I was gonna propose that Jim is back, Jim is back on Monday, and I was gonna propose that, that, that I sit down with Jim and update him on this, knowing Jim and his, being as conscientious as he is, he'll, he'll watch these proceedings, but what I'd like to do is, I'd like to draft something up for the board to, to review and take a look at, and see, you know, and I've, I've been capturing some notes here from what I've been hearing from the board, you know, the fencing and the landscaping and, you know, things like that, so, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to look to get something drafted up next week and brought back to the board for their review and discussion.
Okay.
It's fine.
If you're, I mean, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
And then, and then the question, you know, for the board is, is that, what are the number, what is the number of units that, that you're looking at, I mean, you know, this evening, we've talked 10, 11, 12.
I'm okay with the 11, that, as, I think it's most of your most recent draft.
Right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, so we'll, we'll take a, we'll take a stab at putting a draft together for the board to take a look at, we'll, we'll put in 11 as the, as the tentative number, but we'll, we'll put together a draft resolution and bring that back for the board to take a look at next week.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Another thing too, would you be able to, as I don't know the answer to this, ask Jim, since he is the staff person for the historic preservation board?
Sure.
What type of review can we have over their decision with respect to the fence?
Okay.
The type of fence.
Okay. All right.
Hey, sounds good.
All right, we'll, we'll draft something up and bring it back as a draft to board, to board to take a look at.
Okay.
Okay? All right, great. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Under action items, we'll move on to item D, and this is the Aerosmith Development Telecommunications Antennas at Harris Whalen Park. I know that Andy and Rob were absent, left the materials in your box, so at least you had the chance to take a look at it. They provided a lot of input feedback as it related to a number of things, including, you know, health impact-related items and what have you. They currently have permits, and so Mark's name is attached to this because he was pinching for Costello. But essentially, they have permitted for billing permit to remove some antennas and some equipment and then to replace and kind the antennas and equipment. It's currently as a held item in the Building Department awaiting this board to provide, you know, a thumbs up or thumbs down, you know, for this. And so, this was the replacement, updating of some existing equipment there, not adding additional, just replacing things that were there. And so, I think our action item is, is that do we give a thumbs up to have them move forward with a billing permit, or is there something more that we might need?
Was this the one that required the sound tests?
No.
No?
No. That was something different?
This is so straightforward.
They're just swapping it.
Are they upgrading?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
AT&amp;T is going to have...
Because that's what they did the last time, but they also put in like backup...didn't they put up some backup capabilities or something?
Right. There was some testing that we had or asked of...
The ground generator.
Ground gen, yeah.
That was a backup when they replaced some stuff on the pole, mounted a backup generator, and the board asked for some sound measurements just to make sure it wasn't an impact.
So, this is not even that intensive?
They indicated they're basically going up the pole and into the shed, and that's about, that's all they're doing to test and swap out.
Okay, sure.
There's no construction or anything.
All right.
Won't look any different.
Is it going on Pro Services, is that the objective?
Yeah, well, that's what I... For us there in AT&amp;T, that's what I asked.
Yeah.
Is there a dead zone in Penfield that I'm not aware of?
There is a dead zone in Penfield, down Panorama, that's where we...that'd be a nice place to put up some...but that's not where they're looking.
That's right. And be careful what you wish for.
I don't have any objections.
Okay. So, we're comfortable. I'll ask maybe Mark if he'd take back to cause that the board is comfortable, we should prepare a letter back to Aerosmith Development, who's working on behalf of AT&amp;T, and that letter, that can be copied to the Building Department, and the Building Department can then move forward with approving their permit for replacement.
So, there's no motion or resolution, I think, for this?
No, I think what we'll do is we would be looking for a motion in a second to have a letter drafted, you know, supporting the improvements, and then asking Mark and cause if they'd put that together with what I would call the appropriate conditions.
I move that.
Okay, so, it's been moved, and seconded by Rob. All right, any further discussions? Any input that you'd like to have on that, Mark?
No, I just know the Building Department was asking about it just as recently as today, and I said it was a pending item before the board tonight, so I can circle back with them and let them know. At least it's moving ahead, have them wait for the letter, but at least if they've got to complete their review or something, at least they know that the board's comfortable with it.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. We'll move from action items to information items, and we've got some information as it relates to community choice aggregation. I sent electronically a copy to the board so that they had it. Also provided hard copies. Andy, you may not have a hard copy because yours might be in on the table. But essentially, wanted to give the board an overview. I think one of the things you asked for was where are we on this? What are we doing? What have we done? What are the kind of the next steps and what have you? And the recommendation, or one of the recommendations that we have come back with is, is that we would invite the Penfield Community Choice residents to a meeting to have them provide a presentation. It's about a 12 to 15-minute presentation as to what they believe the benefits are. And then, we've kind of outlined kind of what are the next steps. And again, as to where we are, I think one of the big things that EEAC has talked about is, you know, before we really move down a path too quickly is to begin some type of outreach, talk about this. There's a lot of information that's out there. I know that there are some communities that are involved, and there are equal number of communities that are going through the due diligence. The big issue is, is that at the end of the day, are the cost savings there? If you take a look at the data, you know, R-G-N-E has today, R-G-N-E has one of the lowest rate structures over all of the ESCOs that have been surveyed. And while our interest is to try to provide more costs to our residents, we have to make sure that in fact, if we move in a direction of CCA, that in fact, those costs will be realized on behalf of the community.
Oh, and that they'll continue in perpetuity, that when a contract ends, that then, you know, then the residents are just left with an unknown or are forced into a higher cost?
True, true. And so, when the contracts are done, they're done for a set period of time, and then they have to be renegotiated overall. So, I'll just share, hopefully, my friend, Mr. Valentine, will not allow me the latitude to comment, but as we started to have some conversation a while back on this, Bob Knauer actually brought this sheet to us, which was kind of a breakdown, again, of the different ESCOs that were out there and what the rates were. And all of us took a look at that and said, okay, where does my ESCO shake out of that? You know, some people had R-G-N-E, some people had ESCOs. And I think the thing that we found is that as we looked at it, we said, wait a second. We need to make our first step of due diligence. Let's get back to our current ESCO and maybe get out of that ESCO and get into, and in this case, R-G-N-E was close to the bottom. And I know that a couple of folks actually moved from their ESCO into the R-G-N-E because the amount of money that they saved. So, you know, that was kind of what we saw as a first wave. And I know that there is a lot of interest and a lot of pressure for, to move forward with this, and it may in fact give us the opportunity to save. We just need to make sure that everybody in fact is realizing that. The biggest thing that I know our committee, as we were taking a look at it and discussing it, is that it's...everybody is in. So, essentially, our board would move forward to put everybody in, and if you wanted to be out, you would have to opt out.
Opt out to the R-G-N-E?
So, it's not an opt-in.
Yeah.
It is an opt-out. So, if we were to move forward with this, we would say, okay, all of our residents, residential properties, commercial properties, you're part of this.
Right.
And if you don't want to be part of this, then you have to physically do something to get out. And again, people will be interested in being part of it if in fact they are saving money. That'll really be the key, is that if they're saving money.
Well, if R-G-N-E's the one that put in our gas and electric in our houses, and you opt out of that, do they, this other ESCO, they take over that?
Yeah. So, R-G-N-E still provides the distribution. So, they've got the transmission lines, they'll still provide the distribution. With the CCA, it is essentially an ESCO, if you think about it. When ESCOs were really, you know, if you go back, when ESCOs were really popular, there was a lot of them out there. Energetics was one, and there's a list of probably 20 or 30 of them. And, you know, folks would look to sign up for either a fixed rate or a variable rate depending upon how pricing was. And so, what would happen is, is that, you know, some of the ESCOs, they would creep up, and I think some people found that what started off to be a lower price, over time, had creeped up, and then some others had been reduced. And so, again, the idea is, is that we want to get the best pricing for folks. And we have to have, I think we have to let people know that, you know, you're all in this big pot. Is that something that you want us to look to do? And I would say that most people would say yes if it lowered their prices, but if it didn't lower their prices, I'm not sure folks are looking to sign up for that. I think the importance of just vetting all of that out. And I will say, you know, and Mark would just, if you would like to chime in, you know, I know the EEAC, as we were taking a look at it, we just, there were a number of flags that were raised. We didn't say, we don't want to do this, this isn't the right thing to do, but there were a number of flags to say, we just need to make sure we're doing our due diligence.
It can't be a knee-jerk reaction. It's got to be a multi-step. I would just note that the Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee under your leadership has been taking a look at this since back in the summertime, August of 2018, if not before, because you had a subset of the committee organized at that time. So, certainly even before August, the idea of community choice aggregation has been discussed at the Town Hall. And the subset of the committee met, of the EEAC, certainly interested residents in these topics and informed, and residents who are aware of, you know, what's out there. And so, I think that certainly, it's obvious that the town is looking into this, that the right people are looking into it to report to the Town Board, and most importantly, that there's a plan that is in place now for next steps that involve public outreach from the town with respect to CCA, public information meetings, and other types of feedback and input to the town before any decision is even brought to, you know, to any discussion by the Town Board. I think that's the appropriate deliberate way to go about a real, basically a permanent type of step that this would be, and to really hear from our residents, is this what they want their town government to be involved in? And that's an important piece.
The public information.
Public information means that, you know, any idea that's brought to the town or that's brought to us as Town Board members, and I always tell people, first, ask yourself, is this what you want your town government to be doing? And two, ask, how much is it going to cost the town? Because is it going to cost the town so much as a municipality that the cost savings are not going to be that much because the town itself will have to incur additional expenses in some form? So, I think it's clear that Tony, you and the EEAC are on top of this, and, you know, we welcome input from, you know, community groups and residents in the form of our public information meetings. We are, you know, we're diving into this, but to take our time. I would suggest we take our time in doing this. There's no rush when it comes to due diligence.
Yeah, so, you're going to invite somebody, come in and speak?
One of the things I'll say that I think we've been very impressed with is the work that Bill Smith and Pittsburgh did. They held several public information meetings. They brought in experts. They actually hired a power management system out of Victor. They elected to do that. In addition, they brought in R-G-N-E, then they also brought in the Tennessee Regional Planning Group. And all three of those entities made presentations at these public information meetings to talk about what were the pros, what were the cons, you know, what were some of the issues and items that they should think about or consider as part of that. And those, based on what I, in speaking with Bill Smith and then in taking a look at their website, that's got a lot of good information on it, they were very well attended. And Pittsburgh has not made a final decision. Pittsburgh is, they went through, held a public information meetings. They did actually put together the local law to allow the establishment of that program. That was a step that they took. But again, they have not taken that next step to go through and either select a program administrator and then to move forward and have a memorandum of understanding and then actually start with that.
Yeah, there's a lot of steps.
There are a number of steps, and, you know, and Bill, I know Bill Smith has been working close with his board and just making sure that, again, they're aware of everything and minimize the surprises at the end of the day. And I think, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We certainly can learn from them, and the process that they had thus far has been outstanding. So, I would suggest that us, you know, certainly following that as one of the models as we move forward. And then I would suggest that we bring the group in to provide, and similar we did on the Carbon, when they came in and made the presentation, we took a look at that and then, you know, continued to do our vetting now. So, if you're comfortable with that, we'll look to maybe get them a future work session agenda for, you know, 15 minutes or so.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And then we'll continue. This will be, you know, next, I think this will be kind of a standing item on our EEAC meetings as we continue to move forward.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening, seeing no further business coming for the board. The February 27th, 2019 work session stands adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you everyone that participated. Thank you to Penfield TV.